All right.
This is good, just like that? Okay?
And am I, am I okay here?
Yep. Number 12.
Hey, welcome all. I am Chief Petitioner Susan Cobb. Should I take my mask off?
Yeah.
Welcome all. I am Chief Petitioner Susan Cobb with the Nonpartisan Commissioners Committee and thank vocal seniority of Ben, Roger Sabadini, and Sid Snyder for helping us today. Please know Sid is filming in the hopes we can share this information more broadly. Additionally, the League of Women Voters Deschutes County, especially their Vice President Mimi Alkira, who is also a chief petitioner, has helped to make this event possible. To join League of Women Voters Deschutes County or to sign up as a circulator with the NCC Committee, information is available at the tables. We are here to learn about a citizens' initiative petition which asks our county commissioners to make the Deschutes County Commissioner's seats non, and elections, nonpartisan. To make the Deschutes, I'm sorry, making that seat and election nonpartisan, in short, means no primary. All elected seats in our county, except for that of commissioners, currently have nonpartisan elections. We are also here to collect signatures. Citizens initiatives require face-to-face signature collection. In a time of pandemic and increased instances of, and intensity of fires and smoke, opportunities to collect signatures in 2021 have been limited. We have circulators at the table and also around, so just look for somebody with a clipboard. As of today, we have 2,953 signatures, thanks to the persistent work of these and many other circulators. To get it on the ballot in May 2022, we need about another 4,000 signatures. If we do not succeed, it's not over. We will keep collecting to assure it will be on the ballot in November 2022. During this hour, during this hour, I will introduce each panelist, ask them three prepared questions, we'll open to you for your questions. Roger will be handling the microphone. Panelists will provide closing remarks, and I'll wrap it up. We are very fortunate to have these three distinguished public servants join us today. Past Deschutes County Commissioner Tammy Bayney, current Deschutes County Commissioner Phil Chang, and retired Tillamook County Commissioner Mark Labhart. After 12 years in elected office as a Deschutes County Commissioner, Tammy Bayney is now the Executive Director of the Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council, COIC, the Region's Council of Governments. Ms. Bayney has served in a number of statewide capacities. She has served as the President of the Association of Oregon Counties, representing the 36 counties in Oregon. She was appointed by Governors Collingowski and Brown to serve two terms on the Oregon Housing Stability Council, which directs the state's Affordable Housing Agency. Her knowledge and experience in connecting systems reform and health outcomes led to the appointment by Governor Kitzhopper, excuse me, Governors Kitzhopper and Brown to serve eight years as a member of the Oregon Transportation Commission, four of those years as Chair. She is a, is passionate about public service and serving communities, not parties, and is supportive of the Make Deschutes Nonpartisan Initiative. County Commissioner Phil Chang was elected to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners in November 2020. He has made the county his home for 17 years and raised his son here. His career as a natural resource manager, Phil, has worked hard to bridge the urban-rural divide and to develop bipartisan pathways to move forward on difficult issues. He hopes to bring that approach to challenges that the county is facing, from housing and land use to expanding availability of childcare to containing the COVID pandemic. Mr. Mark Labhart served three, four-year terms in Tillamook County before retiring and moving to Sisters to be closer to family and roots in central Oregon. Mark served on the Association of Oregon Counties Board of Directors and the National Association of Counties Transportation Steering Committee. Governor Brown has appointed Mark recently to serve on the Oregon Fish and Wildlife Commission and the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board. Thank you so much for helping us today. So I'm going to ask a question that Mimi and I have developed from our experience collecting signatures from would-be signers. And then any one of you can answer, just kind of indicate that you want to answer, and the others can also add to that reply. With no primary in November, we could have six candidates and a winner with only 26% of the votes. How is that fair representation? Anyone want to take that?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so there, do it like this? Like a rock star? So that really is democracy at work, in my opinion. That's, and individuals who choose to run, there's a passion behind that. And I, I believe that at 26, that person's going to have to work harder than probably someone who came in and was able to secure more of, of the support. But I, I would say that that's what democracy looks like, and I would hate to see that curtailed by wanting to keep today's system so that we leave more people out than more in, in my opinion.
I'd also say that this ballot measure does not ask the question how exactly elections will be structured when the positions become nonpartisan, but that invites a whole bunch of additional thought about things like ranked choice voting, whether we want to have a, an election in May and see if anyone can get 50% outright to become the commissioner, or whether they have to go to a runoff in, in November like they do in Jefferson County. So there's a lot of ways to, to structure nonpartisan commissioner elections that make it so that you, you don't end up with six people all splitting the vote at, at once for the election that really, really counts. And I, I'd actually be curious to hear from Mark how they do it in Tillamook County.
I wasn't gonna, I was just gonna say they covered it all, but in Tillamook County, it is nonpartisan. And so I'll, I'll answer that in the next question, but I thought you did a, did a good job. It's nonpartisan, there's three commissioners, and some are registered Democrats, some are registered Republicans, some are registered nonpartisan, and so it, it doesn't matter. You're voting for leadership, you're voting for the, the person, you're voting for what they believe is their vision for the county, and then you can vote for them whether you like them or not. So that, that's how it works in Tillamook County. There is a runoff. If you get, in the primary, if you get 51% of the vote, you're automatically a county commissioner. If you're running against maybe three other people and you don't get 50%, then the top two runoff against each other in the November election. So they figured if you're over 50%, you must be pretty good, so.
So that's, that's one, one, as Phil was saying, that's one way to, to figure out how the law will be written. And basically, this initiative is saying we want the county commissioners to decide what that law is and to implement it. So the initiative does not define any law, because we're citizens, we don't write laws. So it's a citizens' initiative. What is your main reason for supporting this initiative?
This is the one I really want to answer. So most of the time, I'm going to read here, because I want to make sure I cover everything. So most of the time, county commissioners are working on solving problems that are fairly nonpartisan. People, at least in Tillamook County, one of their commissioners, and I'm going to repeat myself here, who are leaders in their communities to help solve the county's and state problems. Let me give you some examples. And think about Deschutes County when I say these. When are you going to pave my road? We get all kinds of questions about folks on county roads. When are you going to pave my road? When are you going to gravel my road? When are you going to fix all those potholes out there? The dump's getting full, are you going to find another location? Now, think about these when I'm talking about partisan versus nonpartisan. These aren't partisan issues. Are we going to have a county fair this year? If so, how do we make it the best yet? What are we doing about the homeless situation in our county? When are we going to put up that new county library that we've been talking about for a long time? Do we have enough sheriff deputies provide adequate coverage for the citizens and what they expect? Do we need to expand our search and rescue teams? How do we continue to work with the US Forest Service and the BLM to reduce the risk of wildfires? Big issue in Deschutes County. How do we work with ODOT to keep improving our roads as we continue to grow? How do we make sure our county court systems continue to provide the services for an increasing population? How do we continue to grow in a smart way? And the list goes on and on. Do any of these issues sound familiar for Deschutes County?
So I would agree with everything that's been said, but I think a case could be made that some of those issues could be considered partisan, because everything comes down to sort of, feels like it on occasion, a divide these days. But the two things that we don't do, which I wanted to lift from, is, well, when does it really matter? Like, as a seated county commissioner, when are you really going to have to use your party affiliation? And it comes down to when the vacancy currently, in the way that the county is structured, if a vacancy happens, the board appoints the person of that party that has vacated. So if the party, if the person vacates and it happens to be a Republican, then the local Republican Party forwards three to five names, they go through a process, and then the Board of County Commissioners makes a determination, or not, of the selection of the next individual. And if that person is not selected, then the governor steps in and makes an appointment. And so during my 12 years in elected office, I never had a, an issue come before my desk that, or on my desk, or an issue that I met with someone about where it was truly a partisan issue, whereas being a Republican or a Democrat or, you know, an independent would have mattered. It matters in terms of the person that you elect to serve in that capacity. And so I don't see that being nonpartisan takes away where you actually learn about individuals and what they stand for. And I am troubled if we look at individuals as party affiliation as being similar. And I, I worry that we, if we generalize that people, because of a party, must believe X and Y. And I really hope that this is an opportunity for people to get to know who it is that they are hoping to elect to serve them. And I, I would say that we don't caucus as a Board of Commissioners, you only for three, you have to count to two, so they make it really simple in the math department as well. And, you know, I also was wondering, well, so isn't it because, and I've heard this, Tammy, isn't it because with the motor voter law, when we put forward that you, when you're signing on for your, for your license, that you would become immediately registered as nonaffiliated? So isn't it just that we have so many nonaffiliated people and it's, it's related to that? Well, I looked back at the numbers from 2014, 16, 18, and 21, and it, it doesn't ring true. It, it doesn't ring true that we have a significant number, number of nonaffiliated, and they're just not, they're just not growing in the other parties as well. I see that a national movement is happening where people are stepping away from a party. And quite frankly, if we had open primaries in Oregon, we wouldn't have this conversation at all. So those are some of the reasons that I believe this should happen.
So I'm going to talk specifically about partisan primaries and what they do. I, I believe that partisan primaries disenfranchise people and drive candidates to the extreme. It is, in a, in a setup like we have right now, it is really hard for a candidate to gain momentum and visibility to compete in November without participating in a May election. And the only people who can participate in May elections right now are registered Democrats or registered Republicans. So when those people show up in the May, in the May ballot book, voter pamphlet, and people get their ballots, people who are not registered Democrat or Republican cannot vote in the primaries. So they have, they have no say. Nonaffiliated voters, independent voters have no say essentially in who is going to get the visibility and the momentum to be a viable candidate in November. And in, in Deschutes County, we have 40,000, you know, 40, more than 40,000 people who are either nonaffiliated or independent. So it's, it's a huge number of people to basically disenfranchise from any say in who's going to be the candidates for county commissioner. So then after that, I would also say that primaries can select for the most partisan candidates, because the, the people who vote in, in primaries, they are extremely engaged and they track really closely, but, you know, very, very often, the people who vote in primary elections are the most hardcore partisans as well. So if we want to allow, you know, the whole spectrum of voters to participate in, you know, our democratic process and in advancing candidates to a, a general election, I don't see how we do that with the partisan primaries that we have. Maybe if we had open primaries, that would change dynamics significantly, but we, we don't. So that, that's, that's my main reason for supporting this initiative.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So a last question that I have, and if anybody in the audience has questions after this one, feel free to ask Roger, and he'll come over and, you know, you can ask your question. So this last question, do you see a, a advantage to making Deschutes County Commissioner's seats and elections nonpartisan? And if so, please explain. So this is asking, what is the main advantage?
I think it's the involvement piece. And there also is a significant amount of financial draw that comes from the community in supporting candidates. And you will often see that it's two different elections. You have the election as the primary, and then you have a significant amount of money that's also taken from the community to get your message out, to be able to get to the November election. And I see some candidates here today, and, and that is a reality. So you are essentially running twice, but you're also drawing from dollars from the community who want good leadership, and so they're, they want to contribute, but those dollars really could be going to other things in the community as well. And so similar to what Mark had mentioned, it's in the structure of how we want it set up. If it is that 51%, then you're done. And that really shows that the community, that person's had good exposure and that person is, you know, well-liked. But if not, then you have another bite at that apple, and then really you go for another election. And that's happened here too. So, you know, for me, this isn't about what it looks like. This is the chance to make it look like we want it to, and right now, we don't have that. So do we want more choice for more people? Then I would say, sign up, and let's see what that looks like.
So are there, are there any questions from the audience at this point? Because I do have other questions if you, if you don't.
Hi. So even though I, I support this initiative, I'm constantly talking to people who don't. And I have my, they give me their reasons, I have my arguments to talk to them, but I would like to hear from you, your response to a couple of the arguments that I hear against this initiative. So because I tend to hang with people who are on the left side of the political spectrum, they say, well, now that Democrats outnumber Republicans in the, in Deschutes County, why would you give up that advantage now? And they, finally, it's flipped the other way, it's our turn. So that was one argument that I hear from folks. The other argument has to do with the fact that, you know, people that come to something like this are involved, they pay attention, they know who the candidates are, they know what's going on. But the large majority of voters don't really, and a lot of them really depend on party affiliation to get an idea of who these people are. So how do you deal with the loss of that information, as imperfect as it may be, for these seats? Thanks.
Okay, so basically, two questions. You know, the Republicans have an advantage right now, why would they want to give it up? And the second one being, what was the second one? Yeah, the Democrats have an advantage, and why would they give that up? I'm sorry, and what was the second one? Oh, and, and the party affiliation, you know, the R and D by the name. Anyone want to take one or both of those?
How about I try the first one? I don't think of parties as teams. It's not, we won, you lost. I think of parties, in their, in their best form, I think of the parties as think tanks who put out ideas and concepts and principles, and then people get to pick amongst them. And so I, I guess, you know, the, the idea like, well, you know, like, I'm, I'm a registered Democrat, you know, don't I just want the Democrats, now that they have an electoral, you know, advantage in terms of voter registration, to just win all the time? I, I don't think, I don't think that's a good reason for them to, to, to win all the time. I think if they want to win all the time, they should win all the time based on how good their ideas are and how, how compelling those are.
I agree with what the Commissioner had mentioned, and I would just throw out that 49,170 voices would yet to be heard in that scenario. And I would also say that it doesn't mean that you change your party affiliation to nonaffiliated. Individuals are still affiliated with whatever party they want to be affiliated with, and the parties are welcome to support a candidate. The parties can support two candidates, because I think that our parties locally are not necessarily, whether you're on the right side or the, or the left, not entirely aligned with where everyone wants to be either. I mean, it's about choice. And so I don't see where it takes away your party affiliation, because you are still affiliated with the party if that's your choice, and the party still has a choice to support you as their candidate through the process. And we see that happening in nonpartisan elections, which is a question I get asked. The elections are already partisan, and they are nonpartisan elections for city council for park and rec. And, and I, I believe that's just, it is where we are right now as a society to a lot of extent, but I believe that it is still giving more choice to more people to vote. And to not have a person's name on a ballot because you are not affiliated with a party, in my opinion, limits choice.
Yep, well said. I'm registered nonpartisan. I didn't get a vote for the last county commissioner until the general election. So I'm one of those 40,000 people in this county. And so if you, if you look and you say, you know, we're, we're a country of people, we're not a country of party. And we elect our leaders based upon who we think will do the best job in representing those interests that we care about. And so why not give all the citizens of Tillamook County, who are registered voters, an opportunity to vote for the candidate of their choice? And you find out about them by being involved. You, you read the paper about their positions on things. You attend candidate forums. You watch TV for candidate forums. You reach out to that candidate yourself, and I want to know what your position is on this, because I'm deciding who I'm going to vote for. It's not whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, I'm voting for the best person. In my case, I was 12 years as a county commissioner, two of those terms, nobody ran against me. And that was a, it's a very partisan county. So they ran against me because they felt that, that I was representing their interests. I don't necessarily vote Republican or Democrat or independent or nonpartisan. I was voting for what I think was the best interest of the citizens of Tillamook County. And so, so that's where I have. So if, if you're a, a very strong partisan person, you know, the sheriff's nonpartisan, the treasurer's nonpartisan, the county clerk's nonpartisan, the DA's nonpartisan, but the commissioners tend to be partisan. So, so think about that for a minute. Those, those are all people that are providing leadership skills, leadership in the county.
We, we've talked about how so many issues that county commissions deal with are really not partisan issues. But because we have partisan elections, what should be nonpartisan issues actually become partisan issues. People, people drag partisan agendas into debates about how, how we produce more affordable housing, how we tackle COVID, how we keep our communities safe. And, you know, these are, these are generally sort of national level, you know, partisan divides that really hold us back from good problem solving. And so if we can, you know, my hope is that making, making it so that people don't have to appeal to hyper-partisan voters in primaries, in partisan primaries, will make it so that they can govern as reasonable people who, who try to make the best decisions possible, you know, given the information, the resources, and the staff, and everything else that they
Okay, so I have another question. So Phil, you have been a proponent of this policy for years now. Please explain why you think it is better than how we currently elect commissioners. And I know you've said pretty much all of that. Is there anything you want to add?
No, disenfranchising, disenfranchising nonaffiliated and independent voters and depriving people of, of choices of moderate candidates, I think, are the key things.
So back in 1912, when I first ran for county, I'm kidding. Back in 2006, when I first ran for county commissioner, you, some of you may recall that Home Rule Charter, which is the change of your county's charter, which this is not. This is, you know, this is a segment of and can be one of the menu items if you choose to. But when I first ran in 2006, on the ballot alongside me was Home Rule Charter, which would be to make the treasurer and the assessor nonpartis, or I'm sorry, appointed, not elected. We would have been five part-time, nonpartisan commissioners by district. And people just thought, oh my gosh, that's, that was so much change at once. And so one of the criticisms that I've heard is that it wasn't that long ago that this was on the ballot, and it actually didn't succeed. And I would say, we were asking too much of the voters, and this type of change really should be thoughtful and thought out and given careful consideration. And so I would just, I counter to that. This is one step that reduces, it gives more voice to those that currently do not have voice, and actually would allow them to play in this process a little bit more as well. So I, I just want to recall that that's where we were. And I also want to note that the Bulletin had, at the time, said in an editorial, let's go ahead and vote it in, we can change it later. And I then stepped back from supporting it in that I've yet to see where we change things for the better later. So my two cents.
So I'd just like to add a little bit on to it, because, so what are, we're talking about doing this in Deschutes County. Well, what's happening in the rest of the state? So I got some figures here that I thought are pretty interesting. 26, there's 36 counties in Oregon. 26 of Oregon's 36 counties have nonpartisan elections for their county commissioners. 26. That's 72% of Oregon's counties already are doing what we're, we're talking about proposing to the voters in Deschutes County. Of the eastside counties, east of the Cascades, 12 counties are nonpartisan. That's 67% of the counties in eastern Oregon are already nonpartisan. So the majority of Oregon counties have this process in place. Now, some of them are a little different on how they do it, but they do do nonpartisan elections. In, in Tillamook County, when we did it, I was actually a county commissioner, when it was proposed to us, and it came before the Board of Commissioners, and you can do it two ways, through a petition process, as Susan mentioned, or the county commissioners can do it through a vote. And so we said, the three, us three county commissioners, we said, well, it costs money to do a petition, let's just, let's just ask the citizens, let's see what the citizens think. So we voted to put it on the ballot as a Board of County Commissioners. And people said, you know, some of the negatives, well, why change? Things seem to be working. Things seem to be working fine right now, why change? And we said, well, let's just see what the voters think. In our county, I mean, it was about a third, a third, a thirds. Third Democrat, third Republican, and a third other parties, independent, nonpartisan. It passed 75% in our county. And that's considered a landslide when you're voting, 75% vote. So most of the citizens in our county said, we want to be similar to the rest of the state and have our elected officials, like the sheriff, like the treasurer, like the county clerk that runs elections and all that, we want them to be nonpartisan. So it passed, and it's been in place since 2006. And as far as I know, people are still pretty pleased with it because they haven't tried to change it back.
So I'm going to put this to you, Mark. In Tillamook County, when you had that initiative before the public, were there any arguments against? And if so, what were your answers to those arguments?
I covered that a little bit. The main argument I heard from folks was, well, if it ain't broke, why do you want to fix it? We think it's working just fine with the partisan elections. Well, that was one viewpoint. 75% of the citizens who voted for it said, no, we kind of like this new system. We think nonpartisan is the way to go, and we're voting for the person, essentially not the party. Now, they may think maybe a little bit conservative, or a little bit liberal, or the kind in the middle. And I tried, my position was, I don't look at a thing from a partisan viewpoint. I look for what I think is in the best interest of the county of how to solve that problem. Because that's what commissioners do, they solve problems for the citizens of the county. And so if I tend to lean a little bit on the conservative side, you can make that judgment. If I tend to lean a little bit on the Democratic side, you can make that judgment, and you can vote for me the next time, or say, no, I think you went too far, I'm not going to vote for you. Well, I got elected three times, and what I tried to do was, I tried to be a moderate. I tried to listen to all points of view on an issue before I made a decision, and then when I, whenever I voted, I made a really strong point of saying, here is the reasons why I'm making the decision. So those folks that were Democrat, or Republican, or Independent, they could say, well, okay, he did what we thought, or no, I didn't like the way he did that, and would not vote for me the next time. It seemed to work, and I think that's what a lot of nonpartisan commissioners around the state are trying to do.
So these are some questions, these are questions people asked about basically how the process, how the law will be written. And so there are questions like, will the candidate still run for specific Commissioner seats, one, two, or three? And am I correct that that won't be known until the law is written? Is that correct, or is that one of those that you can answer?
I'm pretty sure you would still have to run for a seat. And if no other reason, if for no other reason than, right now, there's two seats that run in one two-year period, and then there's one seat that runs in the other one. So you couldn't lump those all together, they would at least have to be that separation.
So you have talked about this, but I want you to go into a little bit further. If the county commissioner election is nonpartisan, how will we know the political stance of the candidates? And so if anyone wants to address that a little bit deeper?
Sure. You could start with the age-old party affiliation. And so that's usually a good spot to start because, again, we're not taking away party affiliation for individuals. But then hopefully, you are reading your voter's pamphlet, hopefully you are getting engaged with the League of Women Voters, and hopefully you are getting engaged in local opportunities to learn about candidates. But I think that, as Sid mentioned, there are a number of individuals that are sort of maybe not as actively involved in politics right now, and they just sort of, some people are just sort of checked out. So hopefully, that voter's guide, and the messaging from the candidate clearly is going to have to articulate where they stand. But if you're not engaged at all, you are likely going to just be left with what the voter's pamphlet states. But again, it's, how much do you want to know about the person that you are about ready to check the box for? So there is some ownership and activity that needs to hopefully occur, but it doesn't take away your voter registration, so that's always a great place to start.
I would only add two things. A lot of you are connected, so you talk to your friends. And in every community, including Ben, there are what I call informal leaders. It may be the person at the coffee clutch that you go to, and they're connected. So you just ask them, what do you think about Bill Johnson? You know, I've heard he's running for county commissioner, don't know too much about him. What do you think about Bill? Or what do you think about Sally? What have you heard about Sally? Watch for letters to the editor. People will be writing letters to the editor about the candidates. So read the letters to the editor. Yes, they are viewpoints from that person, but you can draw a conclusion from that. Because most people will not be engaged, they won't go to candidate forums, but talk to your friends and say, do you know this person? And again, the final thing is the voter's pamphlet, because that's where they're going to state their positions on different things. So there's all kinds of ways to learn about the candidates.
I just kind of, to build on what Tammy and Mark said, it is the job of the candidate to convey their positions to the electorate. And I mean, having now been through one election where I learned a whole lot about campaigning, and not that I know everything, but I mean, that is your number one job, is to convey to people the values, the values and the approaches that you hope to bring to the office. And so if you're not conveying that, then you're not going to be very successful as a candidate.
And I'll just add that we all receive, as a Democrat or a Republican, we all receive our slate cards, and those slate cards will tell you who to vote for, whether it's a partisan or nonpartisan election. So if somebody just wants to follow the line of the Democrat or Republican slate, they can. So I think I'll just do one more question, and then we'll open it to your comments. Voters have said having a primary or not makes no difference in elections being partisan. How would you respond? Have we already answered that?
It feels like the difference between an election and politics. So it doesn't, there's political activity and political, I guess, just there's a political dust-up that happens around election time. But I don't see that that has to do as much with whether the seat is partisan or not. That's the activity of people, not necessarily the opportunity for voice in that election. So I kind of see them separate. Yes, we're going to have heated elections, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's heated because it's partisan or nonpartisan. Actually, there's probably more activity going on if it's nonpartisan, hopefully, than if it is, because then it's really within parties in a primary, not necessarily about the full spectrum of the candidates that you're going to be making a choice from. So anyway, I see them as a little separate.
Okay, so now I'd just like to give you a final opportunity to make any follow-up, final comments about the initiative to share with the public. And I'll start with Tammy, then Phil, and then Mark, please.
Well, I would hope that we don't limit the opportunity for people to have a voice. And I always believe that giving voters a choice makes sense. Whenever we feel like we're afraid to put something on the ballot because we're afraid of how it might turn out, tells me that we're living in sort of this false sense of enjoyment of where we are. I believe that this gives choice to those that want to vote no, and I give this as a choice to those that want to vote yes. And in that discussion, hopefully, there will be a spirited dialogue that brings us to what's right for the community. But this doesn't necessarily say whether it's right or wrong. This gives people extra voice in their own local government and in their own community.
I want to, I guess mainly, I want to thank all of the people who are engaged in this effort to get this question to the voters on the ballot. Things like this, issues like this, good government-type issues, should we have five county commissioners? Would that be better? What if they were, should they be districted? Should they be nonpartisan? Good government-type questions don't engage people nearly as much as issue questions. You know, what do you think about immigration? What do you think about economic stimulus? What do you think about COVID? But these good government questions, they are so important to how we do the work of the people. And in that way, they set us up, the good government questions are foundational to how well we deal with all those issue questions. So Mark mentioned that in Tillamook County, the commissioners made the choice to advance the question of whether county commissioner seats should be nonpartisan to the voters. So with a simple vote of their Board of Commissioners, they moved that question onto the ballot. We had the opportunity to do that here in Deschutes County. I asked the question early this year in January, and my two colleagues refused to commit to putting the question on the ballot for either November 2021, that was for cost reasons, that was reasonable, or in May 2022 at that time. And so as a result of that, there's this hardcore army of people who are working their butts off to gather 6,700 ballot signatures by March, February?
March.
By March, in order to qualify this measure for the ballot, and February. And I just want to say a great thank you to those people for working so hard for good government that's going to pay off in spades for us, for the future of Deschutes County.
Not too much to add, except for this. Change is difficult. Change is hard because we're used to being pretty much lockstep on what things, and somebody proposes a change, and well, what does that mean to me? What does that mean to the county? What does that mean to the state? And so this allows for an opportunity for change. And you say, well, I don't know what it's going to mean to us. Well, I would ask you, 72% of Oregon's counties have this change in place already, and it seems to be working pretty good for 72% of Oregon's counties. If you don't want to change, then that's fine. But my argument is, let's let the citizens of Tillamook, excuse me, I'm sorry, let the citizens of Deschutes County at least have a say in that change. You might have a very strong opinion, but maybe somebody else doesn't. So what's the danger in letting the rest of the citizens of this great county have an opportunity to say what they think? I'm the one that doesn't get to vote in the primary because I've chosen to be nonpartisan. So I'm one of those 40,000 people in this county, and that's a lot of votes, that doesn't get an opportunity to say that. So all I'm saying is, give the entire county an opportunity to vote on it, and let's see what people think. That's what our democratic system is, is we vote for what we think we believe in. And so in my opinion, I strongly support this. Let's give it an opportunity. Let's see what the citizens of this great county think.
Thank you, thank you. A special thank you to our panelists, current, past, and retired commissioners, Phil Chang, Tammy Baney, and Mark Labhart. Again, I want to thank vocal seniority Ben, Roger, and Sid, thank you very much for your help today. And I thank the League of Women Voters, Deschutes County Vice President Mimi Alkira, and the various people with clipboards. You can sign their clipboard today. And I just wanted to say that if you haven't already, and you want to, just find one of those circulators and get it signed. Be well, be safe, and please remain engaged. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to write it?
Yeah.